Are we ready? Okay, thank you. Good evening. Welcome to the town of Emmitsburg Town Meeting for October 4th, 2021. Just to verify something. Staff, could I check one thing with you? This is what was on my desk. Is that the accurate one? Okay, so that would be huge. Yep, thank you. Okay. Everybody has August? Okay, very good. So we're set. Just want to make sure.
Everything else is correct.
Terrific. Okay, thank you. Just want to make sure. So.
I didn't even catch it.
Until this moment, I did myself. Okay, thank you. So, good evening. Welcome to the town meeting for October 4th, 2021, for the town of Emmitsburg. At this time, I'll ask everyone to please turn your cell phones off or silence them. And now I'll ask everybody to please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Washington, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
So are we going to adjust in the plastic world? Are we okay? Okay, okay. So. At the close of the October 4th, 2021 Town Meeting, the Emmitsburg Mayor and Board of Commissioners intend to meet in a closed session for the purpose of consulting with staff, consultants, or other individuals about potential litigation relating to sanitary sewer overflows during rain events. The authority for meeting in closed session for this purpose is permitted by the General Provisions Article Section 3-305, Subset B, Subset 8, Annotated Code of Maryland, which authorizes us to meet in closed session to consult with staff, consultants, or other individuals about pending or potential litigation. The reason for a closed session discussion of this topic is that public discussion of the potential litigation would prejudice the town's ability to defend against and resolve the litigation. The Board of Commissioners will not be meeting in another open session after the closed session has ended. Okay, so we'll move forward. All right. Future meetings, the Board of Appeals will meet on October 18th, 2021 at 7:00 PM here in the Town Office. Note that's 7:00 PM, not 7:30. The Citizens Advisory Committee meeting will occur here Tuesday, October 19th, 2021, at 7:30 PM here at the Town Office. Citizen Advisory will? Okay, all right. Thank you for the correction. It will meet at the Old Town Office on Main Street. The Planning Commission will meet on Monday, October 25th, 2021, at 7:00 PM at the Town Office and via Zoom. The Town Council meeting will next occur on Monday, November 1st, 2021, at 7:30 PM. And that will occur here in the Town Office, and it will be available through Zoom. Moving forward, I'll take the, make the assumption that we've had the opportunity to read the minutes from the September 7th meeting. Are there any modifications or enhancements?
Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
Page four of our agenda packet.
Okay.
The Planning Commission Report section down near the bottom of the page.
Yes, sir.
Very last word of that paragraph should be Sept- September rather than October.
Terrific. Okay. So noted. Thank you, sir. Any other modifications? Hearing none. Is there a motion to accept the minutes from the September 7th, 2021 meeting as modified?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you. The motion's been made by Commissioner Burns. Is there a second for his motion?
I'll second that.
Thank you. The motion's been seconded by Commissioner Ritz. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion carries five to zero. We now turn to the deputy. Good evening, deputy for the police report.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Great. Good to see you.
Good evening, everybody. How are you? Everybody good? So this is a September report. Just me and Ben. We used some vacation time during that time. There was one sick day, 11 vacation days. We had some Police One training, the town election, and pilgrimage. Lead issues were basically we had some service cars. We have some radar units down right now. They're being fixed. We handled 205 calls for service. There was one arrest, completed 54 directed patrols, 45 traffic stops, and 29 wind cards. There was damage to a town sign, the waypoint sign near 601 Main Street, destruction of property at 320 West Main Street, Mount Student Mountains contacted. Charges are forthcoming. Several school safety checks. Some other things I want to add in there. We've had some some flags stolen, some minor disorderlies over the weekend. We're dealing with them. Students, and we're, you know, we're working on that through the proper channels, but certainly have had some uptick in some mount problems, for sure. Student athletes and some were addressed and taking care of some other ones. We'll have to go up through the chain of command, but we definitely have noticed an uptick in some maturity issues. I'll leave it at that. But the residents have made it perfectly clear that they weren't really happy about some of the behavior on Main Street. So it's been addressed. In case you get calls, I know you're going to. Now I've spoken with the individuals and I feel like we're headed in the right direction. It's really the only thing I have to report to you.
Thank you, deputy. Any questions for the deputy?
No, just to let him know that I have received several phone calls from some residents in Silo Hill about some particular problems. Again, it's college students. I'm the biggest fan of Mount students. I think Mount St. Mary's is much needed in this community, but we also have to control if they choose to live in a residential area.
Right.
You know, they've got to do that. So I don't know how we address that, whether we we increase some patrols. I had brought up last year about maybe the first several months of of college, when the college comes back and the university comes back in, that we we have some overtime for deputies to let the presence be known and let them know that we're not going to tolerate it. And I think maybe that might be something we should look into again before it gets way out of hand.
I have a suggestion too, is if, when the college students all come back, when they first come back, they know who's living in town. I believe they have to know who's living in town, correct?
Right.
Why couldn't the college get with them and meet with all at one time and let them know what we actually, you know, what we can be tolerated or not?
They, they have done that in the past. They had several meetings, especially with the athletes that lived off campus. They were, read the riot act, particularly the last two years. I'm not sure if they were read the riot act this year, but there is some very stiff penalties, albeit from their coaches and the athletic department, if the athletes are found to cause problems for anybody in town, and it's reported, they have a lot of problems. The general students, I believe they've scheduled meetings in the past, and I know the different heads of student life and things know where they all live and have visited their houses on occasion when there have been problems in the past as well.
I have suggestions too, maybe some penalties for that. If they're called, maybe we could have cleanup day in town. They can go, you know, every couple of months and have them go through town, pick all the garbage and stuff up.
I know, I know several of them had to do community service through the school and things of that nature when they did get in trouble.
It would be nice for them to do it in the town.
So Sunday, I had my own communities.
You know, plant trees, we have tree plantings, you can plant all the trees and stuff.
Right. So Sunday, I had some community service for them cleaning up. They took care of it. The problems on Silo Hill, these are all the houses where there are all student athlete houses. I know the house you're talking about in Silo Hill, a retired deputy lives next to one of them. And the house on Main Street, they're all student athlete homes. And then the ones right outside of town, and then the ones on Silo Hill, like if you're going to go out to get on 15 southbound, all of these are student athlete houses. So the, the, most, the majority of the students that live in the town that aren't student athletes, we have no problems at. It's the after football or after whatever hockey, whatever games, lacrosse, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. It's the afterparties, which leads to the complaints from, from the town, from the residents in the town, which I completely understand. You don't want to deal with that at 2:00, 3:00 o'clock in the morning.
And but I also understand their kids.
Yep.
You know, they're, they're, they're young youngsters growing up. You know, unfortunately, when I was that age, I was got some bad influence from the kids in Thurmont. They made us go to school down there. They had bad influence on us, but, but you know, we did it too.
Right.
But there's got to be a breaking point.
Yes, I think there's a, you know, there's only so much times you can talk to them before penalties start to take place. Like you have to understand, it's like, we appreciate you. We want you here. We want you to have a good time. We want you to get your education, but you're a guest. You know, it's like when I go out west, I'm a guest in that state and I treat it accordingly. You know, we leave it better than we, than we, than when we got there and the way we, we saw when we arrived. And I try to explain that to all the Mount students that come in interaction with. You only live here half a year for four years. These people live here their whole lives. And they own their residence and they want to have peace and quiet and go about their normal functions in their life. This is where they live. And, you know, we have to understand that in your daily functions that you are a guest, just like being in a hotel. You can't be loud and rambunctious in a hotel. And I said, you need to treat it that way. So, you know.
Mr. Mayor, yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
No, it's a pre-COVID, Dean of Students, and I went around every house. We tried to get in front of it, and then we had the COVID year, and then kind of getting our feet under. This year, it really, it was going fast, the mount. And we, we planning to try to get around all the houses again. And we go right to the door, go and talk to them, and it, you know, it impacts some and some it doesn't.
Right.
But they know we're, we're looking at them. And we're going to try to do that again this fall.
Yes, sir. And I'd be happy to come in whenever.
Sure. That'd be great.
And I, and I had one suggestion that I, I thought we could, prior to school starting, you know, we could have a meeting at the mount with all the students and go and say the expectations of people living off campus in our community. These are the expectations that we have of them, and these is what they can expect from us. And pass that on in a giant form, instead of trying to do it each individual. Hey, you all got the message in August or September. You know what's our expectations are and what we're going to do, you know, on our end. And that way, there's no excuses. Like you already know ahead of time. This is what's not going to be tolerated, and this is what's going to be tolerated. And we do it right at the school, you know, and I'm sure with all the retired cops that are working there now, we can make arrangements with that. So with the, you know, the administrators.
I've brought that up to the president, Dr. Trainer, and I've brought that up to the Dean of Students. I know it's something that's on their radar, but maybe if the, the board were to write the letter with the mayor or something like that, you know, a town 101 or something like that.
Right, yeah. And I'd be happy to draw that up.
Yeah, it would be, I think there'd be a lot of value to that because I, like was said before, there's, there's great value in having the students here, but at the same time, you know, we have to understand thresholds of behavior and, you know, it's some students who represent the school, not exactly in the best way. So the majority seem to be, you know, perfectly fine.
Right, yes.
But, yeah, that's definitely, definitely something I would hope the board would consider pursuing with the mayor. So. Any other questions for the deputy or comments? Okay, great. Sir, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Moving forward, we now turn to the Town Manager's report.
Good evening. This is the manager's report for August of 2021. I'll highlight some key areas related to streets. Staff trimmed weed, we killed sidewalks, curbs, and tree wells on East and West Main Street. They also mowed weeds in the curbs in all the developments. They put up farmer's market banners on East and West side of the square, trimmed some trees on West Lincoln, and then they were also responded after hours for a tree limb that fell across Creamery Road. Related to the park, staff installed the new soffit on the bandstand, completed installation of the vinyl fence around the garden plots. We had to repair some toilets and benches at the pool. They put up the rain barrel and hose at the garden plot, installed the equipment at the dog park, trimmed trees in community park. They also put together and installed new trash cans, grills, picnic tables. And then they installed, put together and installed four new picnic tables at the pool as well. They installed the new section of fence along Community Park Drive that was damaged from the vehicle accident. Related to water, keeping in mind, this was August when we were in the peak of the drought, so the numbers are going to be different than what they are today. In August, Rainbow Lake was .2 feet above the spill level at 16.6 feet. That was at the very end of August, August 31st. For the majority of the month, it dropped to a low of 15.5 and then started to go back up on August 23rd and finally went to 16.8. At the very end of the month, we received 8.2 inches of rain at the water treatment plant in August. Lower lake, lake level made it very difficult for the LG Sonic, and it also hindered the amount of water we were able to get from the lake. The roughing filters started off being backwashed four to six times a day. And fortunately, we were able to get them back down to twice by the end of August. The beginning of the month, there was a high amount of turbidity that came from the lake. Staff had to increase the well usage due to the quality of the lake. All five wells ran in the month of August. You'll see the well totals on page nine. Water production and consumption, we produced an average of 285,345 gallons per day and consumed 242,649 gallons per day. The amount of backwash water in the month of August was about 24% of the total water we brought in. We got 78% of the water in August from our wells due to the lake quality. We purchased 433,150 gallons of water from the mount. For wastewater, we treated an average of 501,000 gallons per day. And again, we consumed 242,649, which means 51.6% of that wastewater treated was wild water. We had no spills of untreated sewage in the month of August. However, we did exceed the plant's design capacity three times in the month of August. We typically measure our rain at the wastewater treatment plant. We received only 3.9 inches of precipitation, precipitation at the wastewater treatment plants. The average is 3.4. At the end of August, we had a deficit of 2.82 inches over the last six months. Again, this does not include the rain totals that we got from the tropical storm that followed in the very beginning of September. Trash pickup will remain Mondays in the month of October. And below that, I've listed some of the meetings that I attended in August. Just a couple noteworthy items. Staff repaired a water leak in front of 9351, 937 Waynesboro Pike. Staff assisted with the sewer backup at Sunoco Station. It was severely clogged with grease and rags. Pump number two at the pump station will not pump to capacity and is being investigated. Staff, after the hurricane, about the middle of September, pumped down the wet well at the pump station and found a massive amount of rags, including flushable wipes and Clorox type cleaning rags bundled in large tight bulbs, balls that are clogging up our system. It's wrecked havoc on our system. It's why pump number two is not operating to capacity. And it's costing, it's causing major repairs to a pump station that is set to be replaced next month or next year. However, we have to put money in it to keep it running. If people don't stop flushing these rags down the system, the cost is going to go up and it gets passed on to the users. I mean, I don't know what else to tell people. You got to stop flushing them down the toilet, and especially Clorox cleaning rags. That's all I have.
Great, thank you. Are there any questions for the Town Manager at this time?
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
To touch on that, I actually had a question regarding the pump station. I'm sorry, I was also told that I, I'm soft spoken and I don't talk loud enough. Is this better?
I can hear you.
Okay. The new pump, obviously it's detrimental. Everything that's being flushed down. My hope is that the new pump that we're looking at wouldn't be subjected to this as, as much if people continue to flush such items down the toilet.
So the new, the pump that will, will replace the one that's damaged right now, we just have to go with what's already in there. So it's going to do, it's the same capacity. It's going to have the same operations. The new pump station, however, does come with, and I don't know the term for it, but something that will be able to handle the rags much better than our current system. You, you know, our pump station right now is 50 years old. Technology's come a long way. So this new pump station will be able to handle the those kind of things better than ours can.
Okay, that, that's good news. And just two more questions real quick here. I know we talked about this in the past. I asked the question about the water purchased from the mount. My years of being here on the board, I never recall discussing that agreement. Is that something that was decided years ago? It's in perpetuity now or something that we'll revisit in the near future?
So the agreement was in place, but I started in 2013 and it was already in place. I don't know the date of it. I could look that up for you. It is in place for emergency purposes as we struggled in August getting water from the lake and then from the wells. It was good to have that option if need be, if we needed additional water.
Well, I'm not, not to interrupt. I just also during my entire time on the board, I know every month we purchased water from the mount. So I just didn't know, is that an agreement? That's just standing or?
Yes, it's a standing agreement. I don't have the exact, I have it on the computer. I could give you the more information. I could send it to the board so everybody could see the agreement. But it does require us to purchase a certain amount of water each month, and that's to also keep the line flowing. It keeps the levels where they need to be. And that's why it's usually, if you look at the numbers, it's usually between 440,000 that we purchase every month.
It's usually, yeah, pretty, pretty close number every time.
Yes.
And final. I'm sorry. Yes. No, I know the purpose. I just didn't know if there was like a sunset clause on that or it just keeps going until we stop it.
I have to look. I don't know off the top of my head.
Yeah, that line's been put in there since, it's been back in the seventies.
Right.
Sixties, seventies. Not that I'm not old to remember, but.
Okay.
The other thing, Commissioner Ritz, it's not costing us a ton. I mean, it's, it's, it's one of those checks that never pops out to me.
It's definitely not the top ten. Yeah.
Yeah, it's one of those things that, like, I'll sign, and it's not one of those things like, oh, man, we're signing this again. It never pops out in any way, shape, or form.
I remember it wasn't very, very high dollar amount. I just, just curious as to the agreement. Regarding the license plate reader and the camera grant, how, how far along are we on that? I know we had discussions, you know, potentially doing that here in town.
Yeah, so we did submit, the grant was, it was due in the beginning of September. Is that correct? End of September? Okay, so we did submit the grant for tag readers and one camera.
Okay.
And we haven't heard back if we got the grant yet or not.
Okay. Well, it's good news that that went through. So thank you. That's all I have, Mr. President.
Thanks, sir. Any other questions for the manager?
Last month, I brought up about our after hours being prepared for storm management and things like that. And since that time, an employee of the city of Tontown who lives here in town brought to my attention what's used in Tontown. And what it is, it's kind of like an answering machine, and it can be used all the time. But if you're calling in with a water emergency, you hit one, and that message goes directly to the, the water person, or if it's a sewer problem or just a general, we have a tree down on Creamery Road, that would be, go directly in a text message to that person. And it would eliminate having to have somebody here in the office during those hours, but we'd still give, then staff could determine whether it's got to be handled right now or whether it can wait till tomorrow morning.
Right.
So I'd like to see us, if we can contact Tontown and just get a price and see what, what it works. But according to them, it works very, very well and gives the, the community someone to be able to get a hold of right away.
Right, no, that's good. I'll reach out to them.
Okay, thanks.
Great, thank you, sir. Anybody else for the Town Manager?
Yes, sir.
Mr.
Two things. Correct me if I'm wrong, just so we can make this announcement now. I know it was in the water letter, but we're flushing, we're going to start flushing the hydrants on the 25th, correct?
Yes, thank you. I forgot to mention that. The week of October 25th.
Okay. The other thing is, so obviously I drive all, all around the state, and one of the things I noticed, you know, we obviously put the announcement out on Facebook. We put the announcement out in the quarterly newsletter, and I think through the alert system as well. I saw one, like, so a construction road sign saying, like, road closed. They had it where it said flushing of the pipes Thursday, and they had it at the entrance of like two different neighborhoods. Has that something we ever thought about? Like, we have four entrances to town right now, north, south, east, and east, west. Have we ever thought about putting something like that where we can just put it up the week before? So, hey, it's just an extra added thing. I don't think it would run us, and it, in reality, if it just says Thursday, we would just make sure we put it out on Thursday, you know, the week before saying Thursday and stuff like that is something we can consider as well.
Yeah, we can look into it. I had, no, I hadn't ever thought of, of doing that. You know, utilize the alert system. That was something new, but I mean, it's certainly something we can look into.
I figured staff could just pop it up on the Monday. Everybody drives into town. There's only four ways to get in. So everybody's going to see it at some point in time. That way, we don't have to run into the issue of, oh, I didn't know. I didn't know.
Okay.
Cool.
I would suggest posting it as opposed to popping it up as it's a collectible for universities to.
Don't disagree, but whatever the cost effective manner might be.
Right, right. Very good. Thank you, sir. Any more questions for the Town Manager at this time? Very good. Hearing none. We now turn to the Town Planner's Report.
Okay, thank you. This is the plan report for August. For Board of Appeals, I processed the July 2021 Board of Appeals decision. Under Commissioners, I prepared presentations for your meeting in September. Grants, Community Legacy, and also Chesapeake Bay Trust Grant Management. We're continuing to do the Silo Hill Stormwater Basin retrofit design and permitting. I did submit a record of attendance grant requirement document that month. Under Community Development Block Grant Management, conducted five construction inspections, reviewed and processed weeks one through four payrolls. I also processed the payment request number one, which included field measurement confirmations, process a grant reimbursement request. I attended a progress meeting on the 23rd. I conducted four employee interviews as required for the grant. As of August, we only had five of 130 ramps completed to date. I will talk more about that at our public hearing tonight. Cleanup greenup grant. I worked on the final report for that under MS4. Silo Hill Stormwater Basin retrofit, I assisted our contractor in applying for the Chesapeake and Coastal Grant. This is going to be a very large grant request. Tree planting projects, worked with surveyor on the forest conservation deed plat, and also the deed of easement for the daughters of charity property, work with Streamlink, and also why I have your attention on that. If you are available on the ninth, we have a tree planting. We are looking for residents to volunteer. Just go to Streamlink's website and sign up to volunteer. This is saving the town over $400,000. So we, we definitely need volunteers to help us. We, I worked on the current year. Yes, sure.
The mount?
Yeah, I talked to Bernard Franklin about, yeah, about, you know, getting in touch with the kids to help plant.
Okay, yep. I have a good relationship with Bernard. I'll send him an email tomorrow. Thank you. It's this Saturday from, I think it's nine to 11.
And where will it be located?
This will be over at the wastewater treatment plant at the entrance. You'll see, we'll be out there directing traffic.
Off Creamery Road on the other side of Route 50.
That's correct. Yep, thank you. Let's see, under our utility feasibility study, I did the bid opening on the third with Kathy and processed bids. We reviewed all bids, checked references and recommended firm. The mayor was also part of that. Worked with contractor on Community Park Stormwater Management Basin Outfall Stabilization Project. Under permitting, I processed 13 zoning permit applications with the help of Amy. Noteworthy, a one-time new non-residential structure. We approved the zoning permit for rudders that month. Processed 17 backflow preventer permit applications, one street closure permit application. This was for Irishtown Road. Mailed 10 high hazard backflow permit renewal reminder letters, responded to incident reports, completed the M dot S H A. completed the M dot S H A utility permit application for sewer work at five oh two East Main Street. I created the apiary and backyard chicken permit applications and permit templates. And I updated ten development permit applications due to the new feed schedule. Under Planning Commission, uh, the new Creamery Road pump station, I received, started reviewing and started to prepare the staff memo for the improvement plan. And also the Advocate Public Facilities Ordinance and Forest Conservation exemption exemption requests. Irish Town Road, this is for Brookfield's lot one through nineteen. I finalized the Bertel deed of easement with the mortgage company and our attorney. Worked with the contractor on gaining state comments on the detour plan and also reviewed the road closure plan with Kathy and coordinated with Frederick County and um the state. Village Liquors and Plaza Inn, we received, reviewed and prepared staff memos for the site plan and traffic impact analysis. We also received and reviewed the forest plans, um, the updated site plan and the updated improvement plan. Rudders, process, review the utility deed of easements. Our last one's on the agenda tonight. I planned the groundbreaking ceremony with the mayor, attended a preconstruction meeting. Ripley's Creamery, we reviewed and prepared the memos for the site plan and traffic analysis. Eastern, Emmitsburg East Industrial Park two, reviewed and corrected the preliminary plat, preliminary forest conservation plans and the delineation plans for correction in order to finalize for the planning commission chair and the mayor for signatures. As you can see, development's really busy in town right now. And I attended the planning commission meeting in August and under miscellaneous forestry stand ten project management. And that's my uh presentation, Mr. President.
Thank you, sir. Any questions for the town planner at this time? Yeah, I got one. Mr. Davis. I think my number must have been the first one one for people to call this month, but um had a question on roof permits, replace roofing permits. Why do we require people to get a permit to replace a roof?
Sure. So I guess the the easiest answer is it's required in our code. So seventeen forty eight oh two oh, a zoning certificate required. It states it's unlawful to commence the excavation for the construction of any building, including accessory buildings, or to commence in the moving alteration or change the use of any land or buildings, including accessory buildings, until the zoning administrator has issued a zoning certificate for such work. The main purpose is um we notify each contractor that they're required to receive a building permit. If they receive, if they have to put on any new plywood, any kind of structural supports. And then that requires a zoning permit through the county. The county requires a zoning permit. And most importantly, I think it's for safety. You know, we need to be notified of any kind of major construction work going on in the town so we can properly notify neighbors and anyone else.
The county requires us to issue a permit also.
Yeah.
To put on a new roof?
So they they can't go straight to the county to get a permit for work being done in the town. So the town's notified of the work as well.
Well, that's true and not true. I guess if it's a big moneymaker for the county, they want to be involved. But if it's putting a roof on, they're going to say, well, you guys do it. And the question I'm getting from the citizens are, what are they getting for that money? We don't go inspect it. We don't do a background check on their the contractors. We don't do anything other than say, yeah, we're gonna, we we're gonna charge you twenty five dollars or fifty dollars to put a new roof on. So what are they getting for that fifty bucks?
Yeah, so it it like I said, it's really to ensure that the building, uh, the person who's doing the roof obtains a permit. So basically what we do is we notify the applicants that they're required to get a building permit if there's any structural components that need replaced. So that notifies the property owner, hey, I better take a look at what's going on with my roof. Because if they're up there replacing plywood and two by fours, it needs a building permit through the through the county. It's really about safety.
Here again, I just think it's the government being in someplace they don't need to be. If the county is that concerned about that, let the county do it, let not let us be the the guy. Because we're not going up there and checking it. You don't go up on the roof and say, so somebody can replace the plywood. And we're never going to know it anyway. But.
So we don't have a right to know what's going on in our town?
Not putting a roof on somebody's house. No, we don't. We don't. That's the government being someplace they don't need to be, in my opinion. Which, you know, I know this wasn't a rule that you made, but you know, I kind of do get get upset when I keep hearing that's the way we've always done it. You know, and I and I just don't agree with that. I we're penalizing the people again that are trying to fix up their properties. And we're not doing anything to the people that aren't.
Ultimately, it's the contractor's responsibility to get the permit and pay for it. Um, we're not.
That's a, that's, that gets passed down to the homeowner. You know that they're not.
Well, I know that, but I mean, I I respectfully disagree with that. I mean, I think that there needs to be some checks and balances. I mean, part of our job is to.
That's what I'm saying.
Well, part of our job is to make sure that, I mean, I'm sure you don't want, and I certainly don't want a roofing company putting on a roof on on my house if they're not licensed or they haven't gotten the proper permits or anything like that. And if the county is not going to issue, I mean, the county requires us to do this permit before they will issue that homeowner or that contractor permit. That's the way the county does it. That's the way they do it with all the municipalities. Now, not all you miss municipal, excuse me, municipalities charge a fee. And that's something that I I mean, staff, you know, if you don't want to charge fee, that's that's fine. The to code can be changed for that. But I I respectfully disagree that I think there needs to be a town permit. I mean, I I just do.
I agree with Kathy. It's it's all about safety. It's, um, you know.
But the point is, we're not doing anything. We're not going out and inspecting that. We're not going out and making sure the roof is put on properly. We can say, come get a permit and we take their fifty bucks. And we charge them for their parking spaces. Well, the lady that talked to me doesn't have parking meters, but you know, but we're not giving them anything back. We're not saying, hey, yeah, the contractor did put your roof on properly. We're they're not getting nothing out of it.
The only thing they're getting out of us is processing the pay, processing the paperwork for them to then be able to go to file accounting. That's what they get from the staff. We do about fifty to
Fifty to sixty a year.
Fifty to sixty a year.
But I put a new roof on and I didn't have to do anything with the county. I had to come here and get my permit, but I didn't do anything with the county.
Right, because they didn't replace anything structural.
Right. You only need a permit from the county if you're replacing something structural. You're going up just to replace shingles, you don't need a county permit. But once they rip their shingles off and if they find rotten plywood, rotten woods, or something structural has to be done, that's when you need a county permit.
Yeah, I'm I'm all about get keeping the government out of things where they don't belong. And by putting another piece of new plywood on my roof, I don't believe we belong there. But okay, thanks. Any other questions for the town planner related to the report?
Yeah, just the only thing I'd like to add if I make, just says that the I in the past about before I was mayor, uh, a a painting company came in and put a ladder up in the street and didn't tell anybody. They didn't block out a parking space in front of it and all, all those things and um the town. I was probably one of them that called in and and uh, well, they immediately handled it because it was processed. But if we get so many calls, why do why don't you do something? You don't know about that? I'm paying my taxes for you to know about certain like that, things like that and up. Yeah, we've caught a lot of things in construction that the staff has. We we noticed that Ryan Homes and their dirt, the big trucks of damaged road on Brookfield Drive and and we've gone back to them, but uh, it's it's just something that um will be, we'll get calls and we're going to say we don't know anything about it if we don't. And if we do that, when we already got our fifty dollars process of paperwork for the county and everything, um, uh, it's different. But uh, we we just, you just, it's this and that all the time on all these things. And I agree on fees and uh, maybe there's a fee for, there's a fee for bees and all kinds of stuff where I want to go. But um, I I accept that. Yeah, thank you very much. Great, great point by Commissioner Davis. So thank you.
She's the, Kathy says, if if we wanted to change, could not have to charge fee, replace shingles and stuff like that. I mean, they can still file a permit, but they don't have to charge them.
Okay, so it sounds like we're ready to move forward. Is that fair to say? Okay, so for clarification sake, um, we'll have commissioner comments, we'll have the mayor's comments. And then at that time, we'll turn to public comments for those folks who signed up to speak and share thoughts on the what's going on tonight or what they want to share. Okay, so with that in mind, um, we turn now to commissioner comments. Uh, I'll turn to Commissioner Ritz.
Thank you, Mr. President. First, I'd like to thank our press corps there in the front row. Appreciate you coming. I attended the Arbor Day tree planting on Saturday. Um, thanks to all who helped with that. We planted seven trees. Thanks to Ms. Shaw for organizing that event. I wanted to thank former commissioners Buckman and Ben Benji for running for commissioner. It shows that residents are engaged, willing to bring new ideas to town government. Uh, I want to congratulate Commissioners O'Donnell and Sweeney. Uh, look forward to continuing to to serve with you and helping you to achieve your goals. The recap of our town election in the Frederick News Post had one major takeaway. And that was uh, new businesses are the most pressing issue in town. I agree with that. We've had several new businesses open and some are on the way, but but I'd like to know what else is planned. We talked about Tuscany Pizzeria at Stavros. Ascension Living at Saint Joseph's Place is closing on November first. The old Boyle's store and Granny's attic still are empty eyesores. Federated Stone, haven't heard much more on that. I heard at one time there was going to be a Goodwill Goodwill warehouse constructed in town. Haven't heard much more on that. Going forward, I my hope is that the um, the entire board could be informed of new business plans that come through the town office and with the mayor. It was told to me in the past that, you know, we we as a board aren't privy to that information because one, we don't want to get our hopes up because a lot of things might come through and then never come to fruition and say, oh, man, we lost another one. But I'd like to know why. If I think if we're all on the same page and all part of that process, knowing who's coming and interested in opening shop here. And if they're not, you know, why, why is that? Are are things too restrictive here or or um, not enough incentive to to open business? So so I'm asking that hopefully the rest of the board agrees with me that, you know, if something comes through the town office or somebody discusses something with the mayor, I'd like to know about it. Because together, I think, you know, we we can come up with some ideas to to um, you know, plan, seek, promote and maintain new businesses and then these talking points that we hear about all the time. You know, I'd like to see new business in town. You know, let's, let's all be on the same team working for that goal. Thank you, Mr. President. That's all.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Ritz. Commissioner Davis. Uh, well, we survived this past weekend. I know there was a lot going on, but the the town came through with with flying colors, I think. It was, it was very uh, very, very busy around town, but like to thank anybody that had any part of making that all come together. What was good? That's about all I got. Thanks. Thank you, sir. Commissioner Burns.
Uh, just want to echo what Commissioner Ritz said and congratulate Commissioner Sweeney and Commissioner O'Donnell on their uh victories last Tuesday. Thank you to all that helped out this past weekend and what was a chaotic weekend with fallen firefighters, the baseball tournament and Mount uh alumni weekend as well. And to kind of echo what Commissioner Ritz said, um, in my two years that we've been here, I've seen now six full businesses come in. You have Wookiee Walkers, Dunkin' Donuts, Mason Dixon Mix in. Ripley's Believe It or Not, Creamery, Federal Stone is on its way. They're almost finalized everything. You have the rudders that just broke ground. You have the Plaza Inn that's planned. And while it's not directly in the town limits, it's definitely going to benefit the town as the Frederick Health that'll be broken ground on at Mount St. Mary's. I think the big thing that I think we fail to address is how do we make ourselves more marketable at the end of the day? And in order to do that, we need to bring more homes in. And to bring more homes in, we have to find ways of making those properties more valuable for the homes to come in. We have to reassess, maybe rezone some areas that we can bring affordable housing, whether it be townhouses, single fa- smaller single family homes and things of that nature. The hard part about all that, and as we say that is we don't have the infrastructure that can handle any of that. So if I'm a business owner right now and I'm looking at everything, I'm going to assess all those certain things and I'm going to look, okay. Okay, there's an empty lot there. There's an empty lot there. There's an empty lot there. What's the town doing to try to encourage growth in those areas? I know if we tried to build across from where the rudders is going to go, are we going to have to put a water tower in there? We have to build a separate pump station. All of that's going to take excessive tax dollars on our parts and increased revenue coming in from all those different areas, which could benefit the town. But it's going to take a while for those businesses to recognize that, hey, we want to come in and help do that. So what kind of businesses are we looking at? We've, I mean, we have eight on the list right there. It's going to be tough for us to continue to get that business growth until we have these other things in place. And I think that's where we as commissioners need to step up and start attacking the infrastructure. It's been kicked down the curb for way too long. And we need to start finding the money wherever it may be, grants, everything else under the sun and address these situations, the water, the sewer, everything else, so that we can look more desirable for these towns to come in. I've heard people say, well, we want to, you know, we want a steakhouse. We want, you know, another option besides McDonald's. Well, these big businesses are going to look and be like, what's our revenue going to be off of this? And until we improve upon all those other things, we're going to struggle to get those bigger businesses to come in. So I think the the five of us, six with the mayor, the rest of the town staff, we need to make a conscientious effort over the next twelve months to attack the things that need to be done in order to draw those businesses in. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Sweeney.
Along with Commissioner Burns, um, the Citizens Advisory Committee is going to start working on that issue. We're going to try to put some kind of economic plan together and try to bring work on the next couple of months or next couple of meetings on trying to bring new business and and how to sustain the businesses we have here and what we need to do to bring businesses and stuffs. So we're going to try to start doing that at our next meeting. I also want to thank all the staff and all the residents and stuff to help with all the the functions we had this weekend. We had one, two, three, four, five, six, we had eight business, eight functions going on in town this weekend. We had ball tournament. We had the um, we had a weather balloon here at the school weather balloon launching and and there was twenty or thirty people there. We had fallen for firefighters with the alumni. We had the new business opening on Creamery Road. We had the tree planting. We had the food trucks at the Seaton Center were there and the naval economy was also here. So this was the one of the busiest weekends we ever had in town. And I think the staff and all the people who's helped with all the stuff that was going on, it really, um, Emmitsburg, we didn't have any problems at all, except for we had a couple of, too many fire calls that day, six. Apparently nobody was hurt too bad. But um, that's the only thing that I seen that was that went wrong with the town was we just had a little bit more fire calls than we usually had. But everything else went pretty good. So thanks to everybody for such a good weekend. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you. And congratulations, sir.
I have one more.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead. Yes.
I forgot Halloween. We are having Halloween this year. It on on October thirty first Sunday, we are having trick or treating from five thirty to six forty five. We are having lineup for the parade at six forty five to seven from Federal Avenue into Paul Street. And we will have a block party at the fair hall and following the parade. We're going to have everything that we usually have is going to happen again this year. So I'm going to let everybody know, get the social, all social media and then we're to get it all out that we are having trick or treating and everything. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Sweeney, that's the Lions Club with the Vigilant House Company.
It's actually Lions Club Fire Company, VFW, everyone's.
Very good.
So it's a community event.
Awesome. Thank you, sir. Commissioners, great comments tonight. Very lively. It's good to see. Okay, um, thank you to everybody who ran. It's, you know, it it's good that we have competition for these things and it's good that we have uh, a lot of voices involved. Uh, we had a pretty strong turnout for an election. I know we take criticism for uh low turnout in relationship to the zip code. But regarding the town, um, I'm grateful. Moving forward from there, I want to thank everybody who voted. I want to thank especially everybody who voted for myself. I appreciate that. I hope to again earn that vote and uh and serve the community to the best of my talents. And I'll offer this, uh, nothing I do, nothing any board member does, I'll argue, is done. And and I don't mean to speak for you, good gentleman, uh, is done without the support of our households, our families, our loved ones. Uh, and uh, the support of our community members. And it's that feedback that helps us better serve the community. When you walk around and you're talking to folks, you get feedback. Some things you don't want to hear, some things you do want to hear, but all are necessary to hear. So um, it's it's good that we have, you know, these events and these opportunities. Um, moving forward from there. For us to remain effective as a board, uh, we've got to have more conversations like these, especially in this forum. I think everybody is pulling on the rope. Everyone's pulling on the rope as best they can. But I think there's the idea of an economic development idea through the Citizens Advisory Board. That's, that's very, very useful to us. As Mr. Burns is referencing, retail follows rooftops. So there is a necessity for growth. If people want to see more amenities. The downside is there's a risk to the quality of life that we enjoy in a small town. But at the same time, there are amenities that we do want to enjoy. One thing I'd add to the mix of what we're seeking is not just commercial establishments, but also employers and employers beyond just commercial entities, but professions. And when the university is breaking ground on its health center, that would include a minute clinic, minute clinic type facility. I think there's value to that. And I think maybe that might be the narrow end of the wedge. I've seen more professionals and more businesses in the community because it's, it starts with good health and it grows from there. And I will speak from people who I know in the community and the broader county and the region, people want to be here. I mean, we have something very special and people begin, are really beginning to see that. So again, that's, you know, and compliment to staff and to the board. We're, we're doing some things well, but the other reality is we still need to improve. So I'll say that we want to acknowledge our successes, but we definitely want to see that there's a lot more that we're able to do and a lot more that we should be doing. And my hope is that we can do these things and, you know, we press on forward. Mr. Mayor, I don't want to disappoint you, but I can't give that two hour speech you wanted me to give. So I will conclude my comments here. Thank you, sir. Mr. Mayor, return to you.
Thank you very much and congratulations to you and Commissioner Sweeney on the election. You all read on things you did in the community and what you wanted to do and you stuck to the issues, no personal goofy stuff. And congratulations, we look forward to working with you, everybody. Couple of things were done in September, September 11th, which was the 20th anniversary of nine 11. There was an eight o'clock service that I attended out the FEMA cancer campus. And very special, short color guard presenting the guards, bag piper and just it was wonderful to get back on that campus for anything. It's, it's been, they've been away too long and it was very special. With Commissioner Burns and Sweeney, I attended the groundbreaking rudders on September 13th. And I know the next question is, when are they going to? That was a groundbreaking, but like for the last two years, we kept bringing this to everybody's attention that they're on the way, they're on the way. But, but they did build a place between a stream that goes to the Chesapeake Bay and Route 140. Both state projects, EPA controls the Chesapeake Bay. And so we're in that watershed, some very hard site and they had to, had to get water and sewer to the site. But congratulations to the developer, Mr. Trout, who also owns rudders. Arbor Day, that was special too. We had a former Commissioners Blanchard and Buckman with Commissioner Burns and I there. And we gave an award to Becky Wilson, DNR, who has worked with us over the last four years. She's retiring after 32 years of service. We gave her a card and a tree. I want to thank Matty Shaw for putting all that together. It was wonderful morning. And I think our planning commissioner Hagan, who's here tonight, he was there with us too. And meanwhile, up the road, we had Commissioner Davis at baseball and early in the morning and Commissioner Sweet. My wife takes the dog for a walk really early, went through the park and saw you guys up there along with Mark Sir Gable. So you were, you were, a lot of attention was given to that. October 2nd, Saturday at 6:30, the 40th Annual National Fallen Fire Fighters Memorial Weekend. I gave a welcoming address at the candlelight service. The numbers were cut back to a thousand people because of COVID, but they honored 215 firemen who, who've served us and done so. You get to get a show when you think about it's two years. And one of those was a gentleman from Liberty Town and the other gentleman up this way, he'll be honored next year. But it's just so great to have them back. And then on Sunday, there was the memorial service. I just so terrific tribute. A, just a couple of things, town is now open to normal hours, start in October 1st, pre, pre COVID hours and eight to four and at 4:30, 4:30 and it's every day. Will we rotate the staff a little bit? They have the right now. We've gotten comfortable with some working from home once a week and so that we're going to keep that up too. And let's see, let's see. I did get to go back in the control center there at the, at the candlelight service. And this thing is so big, goes all around the world, fallen firefighters everywhere, streamed everywhere in the world. And they started today planning for 2022. That's the way they work. It's just a fallen firefighters is an incredible organization and they're, they're on boots on the ground today for that. Danny's 15 years ago, I tried to get them here to go out where the coffee shop is. And they told me this before as mayor that, hey, we've got to get $2.6 million in sales. We're not coming anywhere and, and that's one of the problems. How do we generate all these sales for, we have students here and things like that going in and everything like that. But we do need probably more rooftops and, and we have some natural barriers, the Catoctin Mountains, which the flow traffic shed goes this way and that way, but we do attract a lot of people from Southern Adams County. Bowling alley, I met, I think I presented the board, I met with the coach about a year ago, six months ago, or something like that. And, and, and the, and they, they really want a bowling alley here. They got a great bowling team. It's ranked in the top 10 NCA bowling. And it's incredible when they talk about the sport, which, what they do, people bring step ladder so they can stand up and watch, come down and watch. They, and so that, that's on the gift list if we can pull that off. We have put seven to eight million dollars in our downtown infrastructure with sidewalks and square. And, and so we, we again use the term boots on the ground. We, we really worked hard for that and had pulls. It was miraculous that we did it in three or four years to do all that. In addition to the upgrade on the sewer treatment, feed the plant was $19 million. And so we're still at it and we got a wonderful staff. Somebody just commented on the day, the staff we have here. There are comments about when people come in here, they talk to the staff and they, they feel uncomfortable when they walk out because of the way they were treated. But no one has said anything about our service. We're on, on everything as possibly as fast we can. Commissioner's Davis remarks is another way we'll look at to make it even better. And that, that's, that's we add to, let's add to, but recognize what we've got and what we've done. This is, it's just a special little hamlet nestled in against the Catoctin Mountains that it's a secret. And we want to keep it sort of secrets and control the growth a little bit and have, and bring a lot of new people in here, but to enjoy it, but we have a lot of things and the big, the big park out there by the mound is probably within the next five years. $50 million is going to go into that park with baseball and lighted fields and the mount, mount students will will enjoy that and play their night games and have turf fields. It's, it's going to be a wonderful addition. And with that, I think I've taken enough time and thank you again, sir.
Terrific. Thank you, sir. Okay. This time we now turn to public comments. We invite Mr. Eric Sloan to come forward. Mr. Sloan, if you'd come to the dais, introduce yourself, share your address and you'll have your time noted here and with our timer. You don't need to push, oh wait, do you need to push a button on the new setup? So yes, push the large button at the center. You'll see a red light and the red ring and you're good to go.
All right. Eric Sloan, I live at 500 East Main Street, the big yellow house down at the end there. As far as nighttime security, as far as watching out for juveniles and other people that are in place that they shouldn't be breaking windows, I have three buildings on my lot and one of them is an old stable. And I had to actually put shutters on it because of people throwing rocks through the windows in it. Now nobody's in that old stable that uses a garage now. But I've had vehicles messed with. Somebody poured water in the fuel in my one vehicle, airlit out of the tires. And I know it's not bad tires because it's random. It's this tire, it's that tire. And when I've had them checked, there's nothing wrong. It's the, you know, there's a street light right there as well as I have lights on the old ice house. So it's not the fact that it's in the dark. It's just, you know, two o'clock in the morning when nobody's out there to, to see anything that's going on. You know, the little juveniles or whatever they are running loose. I don't think they're mount students per se. I think most of them are probably asleep by that time. And over the years, I've had two of my dogs poisoned. Now it didn't kill either one of them, but what you commonly buy as rat poison is actually a blood thinner. And it, so it doesn't poison and it takes a large amount of it. But it, you'll end up with an animal that's got bleeding and bloody stool, so on and so forth. And if it's a large enough dog, it'll pass through without killing them. But like I said, I've had two separate incidents where I've had dogs, I've had a rush to the vet because they were poisoned. So if you know, if there's any way just to either improve lighting or improve the patrols or possibly enforce the, the rules on, you know, being up and out late tonight. You know, for the juveniles as far as curfews. Yeah, that's about it.
Thank you, sir. Okay, we now turn to Mr. Kevin Hager. Again, if you'd come up to the dais, introduce yourself and share your address and the clock will tell you your time, sir.
Okay. It's Kevin Hagan, 1304 Huntley Circle. Want to thank Commissioner O'Donnell, Commissioner Sweeney on their reelection and thank the town for getting Brookfield Drive repaired that I mentioned last month. I got the email earlier this month. What I want to talk about is some of the campaign points. Everybody up here in your election always talks about infrastructure and business. I don't hear specifics. I hear we want infrastructure. Town staff does a great job in getting grants and biting it at a time. What does the board want as infrastructure? Alls I hear is this infrastructure, but you don't want to raise money. What, what do you want? You got to be the driving force behind that and business. This term gets thrown around. What businesses do you want? Do you want a methadone clinic? Do you want a nursery? You want more comic book stores? What is it that you want that drives what it is? And then where do you want it? Our long range plan calls it for the east end of town, west end of town. Where do you push it? Where's the infrastructure there for the business? Commissioner Burns correctly pointed out, if we're going to put it on that, where's the infrastructure? Where's the plats that you're going to put it on? Where's the water? Where's the gas? Where's parking? I'm not hearing any specifics from anybody. It's all this nebulous business. We got to get down to find what we want and go after it. I hear the town manager, I hear the mayor rattling the chain at different meetings and different associations. I haven't heard from the board doing anything. I haven't even heard what you want. You want a coffee shop? Are you going to their association and saying, hey, have you guys looked at Emmitsburg? Do you look at what we have? And if you want something downtown, I got to go back to Commissioner O'Donnell's parking. We're changing here. The younger generation doesn't carry cash or change. If we're going to want people to use those parking meters regularly, we should really be thinking about, do we have options where they can pay with an app on their phone? You know, it's a lot out there. The newer apps, even if you car pulls up to deliver a meal now pays automatically. They won't have to do anything on their phone. It's GPS located. But want to see the board start defining this. I'm not hearing anything. It's got to be more than just the mayor trying to be this rally call out there by himself and say, please come to Emmitsburg. It's got to be everybody. Everybody's got to be involved and I'm not hearing that. I'm not hearing other than, oh, we'd like some business. It's time to get specific, guys. We need to talk. What do we want? Where do we want it? And what infrastructure are we willing to put in place to make it happen? Thanks.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, Mr. President.
Mr. Ritz, yes, sir.
I just may interject. I think that kind of goes hand in hand with what I was trying to say, you know, the board being part of that process. So thank you for bringing those points up.
Okay, thank you, sir.
That was it.
Thanks, sir. Mr. Davis, yes, sir.
Well, I'll tell you, buying infrastructure as water or sewer, it's real, real plain and simple. We have bad water pipes. We have bad sewer pipes. We have sewer overflows. We have brown water. Mine right now is, and we have an area of town without fire hydrants. So that's my infrastructure and that was.
All right. We turn now to public comment from Sabrina Paxton Daly. If you come up, introduce yourself and share your address and the dais is yours, the podium is yours with the timer.
Do I have to touch this or something?
I think it's on. Okay. The red ring. I think you're.
Okay. My name's Sabrina Paxton Daly. I live at 12 Zanella Drive in Northgate here in Emmitsburg. I opened my newsletter to find out that I needed to register my bees. I have no problem with that. I've been keeping registered bees with the state for over seven years at my address. I was very upset though to open my email and see the application, which was stricter than anything I've had to do for the state. The county does not even require registration and I've certainly never had to pay. Beekeeping is a luxury hobby. It's become very expensive. Seven years ago, I bought a package for $75. Two years ago, I paid 195 for each of my bee colonies. I took a class in 2011 with the Frederick County Bee Association. They issued no certificate. I have the folder. I have contacted everyone that could have been involved in that today. There is no way to, for me to prove that I have taken that class and passed it. I feel that it is unfair and onerous to ask me to spend another hundred dollars and sit through three Saturdays to learn what I already know and what I've already been applying. I dislike that I have to sit down and draw out my, and it's unclear to me when, when you say 10 feet from the back of my property line, my property backs up to Flat, Flatiron Creek. I've put my bees back as far as possible, keep them away from my neighbors. And my friend who is deeply involved in SCBA says that's the idea of the law in the county that would pass. That's fine. But it's not going to pass what I have to do for you. I cannot move my bees, although my husband put his rattlesnake boots out, went on the woods and he, he measured it. And he says, depending on where you're measuring my hives, which I have top bar, I don't have Langstroth. Your, your legislation has, doesn't discuss different types. If we're measuring from the front of the opening of my beehive, then I'm fine. If we're measuring from the back, then I'm not. Asking me to move bees means I have to truck them out five miles away and keep them there for two weeks before I can truck them back. And this time of year, that would be ridiculous to do. They're full of honey and they're very heavy and it would be dangerous. I feel like there needed to be some kind of provision for people who are already keeping bees. And I am sorry that I did not check the agenda and see that you were discussing this. And I did spend more time than I like to admit, reading all of the agendas from this year to see how often this was brought forward. And it doesn't look to me like it was, it was discussed at all, except when it was passed. It's the only time it's on the agenda to 2021-9, correct? I could not find it. So I don't know how many times I failed to be able to come forward and that is certainly my, my fault. But I do feel like, I don't know how many beekeepers are, I assume this only applies to the village limits of which there are what 3,400 people according to the census I went on. I don't know how many beekeepers there are. I don't know if you contacted the state of Maryland to ask how many beekeepers are in this zip code. As far as backyard beekeepers, I only know of one other and he hasn't kept bees in years. So I don't know how many people this affects, but I, the state form, it requires me longer to find an envelope and a stamp than to fill out that form. And I do not understand, talking about things that do not need to be legislated, why I have to legislate these bees. My neighbors have never complained about my bees. I asked all my neighbors before I put my bees in under, even though I'm under no obligation to do so. If they were okay with my keeping bees, I never have more than two hives, although according to your legislation, I believe I can have six, which quite frankly would be ridiculous. I've never kept more than two. I've often kept none. I don't understand. It, it says it's a one time permitting fee of $50. So I assume that I am. So I assume that I am permitting my apiary, then my beekeeping yard. I'm not actually permitting my hive. So if my hives all die out this winter, which they can, Maryland suffers about an eighty percent loss every winter. I I often don't have have to make it. But do I have to reapply if I decide to take a year off or or put in more bees? I feel like there's a lot of unanswered questions here and I don't know who your beekeeping professional was that helped you put this together. But um, I I feel like our our needs weren't taken into account.
Thank you. Mr. Briggs, yes, sir.
All right, as as a former beekeeper, the the main thing was to make sure it it wouldn't allowed in town. And that was the main thing we wanted to do. And there was a lot of discussion on the staff and with me about do we want bees back in town? Does we do that? Yeah, and I do. A long time ago in town before I had bees, uh, some people put hives on there because I had bees out at our farm. And I'd like to come out and inspect your bees and and up. I don't know, they it there shouldn't be some accommodations if they've been doing it for eight years. And I've heard that maybe Commissioner Rich knows somebody else who has bees or I think and.
Yes, chickens.
Huh? Chickens, oh, okay. Well, that was the other, that that was that was the others. That was the other thing. But um, if I if I may, I'd like to set a point by which.
Mr. President.
Bees and we'll 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 make some decisions on that. I mean, eight years and doing this and what pollination does for everything. It it makes everything click and and uh, you know, it was eighty percent of the bees dying in Maryland. Yeah, I I had the same problem out at our farm and and what I had here. So, and I hope to have hives myself here next year after I go through the class and everything like that. But the point well taken. Yeah, uh, if I may, I'll give you a call and come out and look at them next week or this week. Let's get get something rolling. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Ritz, yes, sir. Thank you.
Sorry about that, Mr. Mayor. I thought you were finished. It's hard, it's hard to hear you. I I started to talk. I didn't realize you were still speaking at that point. Okay, um, full disclosure, I did speak with Ms. Paxton Daly prior to the meeting. I knew she was coming this evening. So I I started to do a little research into this and I know that she mentioned this evening that she she took responsibility that she was not aware of our agenda items in the prior agenda items regarding this. I did look back and in August, we did have an agenda item, approval of ordinance twenty twenty one dash zero nine, comprehensive update to Title Six animals for consideration. That doesn't speak to bees there to me unless you look at the agenda a few days prior to a meeting and actually go through it to see what what the text is, then you would see it. And then in September, we had an agenda item, approval of policy P twenty one dash zero four, permits and inspection fee policy for consideration. Again, that doesn't actually talk to chickens or bees or. So part three of my commentary right now. We now have a we have an ordinance in place allowing for bees. Prior to that, nothing spoke to bees. I believe I'm correct in saying that. Therefore, I don't know how we can use the argument, well, now we can legally, residents can legally keep bees. Nothing prohibited them before that I'm aware of. Therefore, wouldn't Ms. Paxton Daly be grandfathered in?
Typically, to answer your question, typically if it's not mentioned in the code, means it's not prohibited. Um.
Not not prohibited.
Correct. That's typically the way.
Good.
That it's been explained to me by pre John John Clapp and now Leslie Powell, that if it's not mentioned in the code, then it's considered prohibited. Um, yeah, it's unfortunate that she wasn't aware of it uh ahead of time. You know, we do our best to get the word out, but you're right. The title of that agenda item is it didn't tell anybody anything. Um, we we went the bee route on behalf of the mayor. That was the mayor's request. And neither one of us are BS experts. And we reached out to the people that we were thought were appropriate to help us write this ordinance. We may have missed things. Obviously, it sounds like we might have. Um, so I mean, we're not, neither one of us are opposed to uh to revisit it and and look at it, but we need input. I mean, we're not certainly not experts in the bee area and um.
Nor I.
Yeah.
It sounds like Ms. Paxton Daly is, though, and um, and it sounds like it sounds like the mayor is going to be speaking with her. So um, I I do appreciate that. So thank you.
If if I can, Mr. Sweeney, yes, sir.
Yeah, I just, um, uh, when I was at the little league game this weekend, we had a lot of bees. Um, a couple of the parents had mentioned that the bees were put on the endangered species list just this past week because we're losing so many eighty percent. So they were just put on endangered species on on the that's what was going around through the room.
Mr. President.
Mr. Golden, yes, sir.
I just want to say one thing about the ordinance. I specifically worked with the Pennsylvania and Maryland and Frederick County Beekeepers Association. The the ordinance was actually a model ordinance from Pennsylvania, which then Maryland looked at and Frederick County looked at. And then we um modeled it to Maryland standards. So this was a an ordinance drafted by the experts. Maryland, Pennsylvania and Frederick County Beekeepers Association. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir. So um, I guess from an advisory position, uh, Mr. Golden, thank you for clarification. Ms. Paxton Daly, thank you for bringing this up. I mean, it kind of echoes what we're trying to do is to make ourselves more responsive. I think, yeah, I I would say that that would be my error for not requiring clear language in the agendas. I I feel that's part of my responsibility when I'm facilitating meetings. So that's my error. Now, moving forward, um, it looks like we will be revisiting it. The fee structure, I think, will certainly give consideration to. Mr. Mayor, I think you you said the word inspect. I think maybe perhaps a visit would be a better word choice than inspect. So to be mindful, uh, just, you know, more colloquial and social than uh to inspect. You 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 offered to come over to inspect the hives. Uh, I would suggest perhaps visiting socially, um, expressing an interest. I believe from what we're what we're hearing from the board is number one, we want to make the process better. That's obvious. Number two, we certainly do want the bees and, you know, what you're doing is an important thing. Um, and we want to encourage more folks to be keep. Everybody likes a nice apiary. Nobody likes to be stung, right? So I would ask if you would please consideration, uh, ask if you would consider rather getting in touch with Mr. Golden and speaking with him in addition to speaking to the mayor and perhaps working with town staff. We can make something that is a little bit more streamlined. And I'm going to use a pun. It would be appreciated. Oh, sorry, had to go there.
Ouch.
It's a honey of a joke. Okay.
Mr. President, can I just throw in one thing? And I do apologize. I spoke to Ms. Mr. Hagan. I spoke to Ms. Paxton Daly. I didn't want to leave Mr. Sloan out. He brought up some good points, too, and I just want to direct this to Zach, actually, because next door to Mr. Sloan's property, I believe it's it's a work in progress. But I know that the lighting plan for Ripley's was approved. They're not going to actually open. I don't know if it's going to help him any, but um, you know, going forward in the future, if they have some more lighting, maybe that that could help. Yeah, so part of the solve part of the problem. Yeah, so with our lighting regulations, we want to protect neighboring adjacent properties, especially our residential properties. So our code specifically states that it can't have any kind of light pollution going on to neighboring property. So unfortunately, um, maybe fortunately for Mr. Sloan, there's not going to be any lights on his property. Or like the back part, I was thinking like behind the building. I don't know what kind of lighting would be behind that. Yeah, I don't think she proposed any lighting for behind the building. The dock, right? All right, just a thought. I was just thinking.
Mr. Sloan.
Sorry, you're gonna have to come back.
To the podium, if you would. Reintroduce yourself for the record and then please share your comments.
Eric Sloan, five hundred East Main Street. You have a light at the corner of Creamery and uh Maine, just across from Harrington's. You have one down adjacent to my property and Ripley's. And now there's one just at the other side of Ripley's that went in a few days ago. My dogs alerted me to it. I went out and watched the guy putting it up at night, which I thought was really interesting on a boom truck. But even between those three lights, plus the one that's at Lincoln and Creamery, they're more like marker lights. They don't put out a lot of light. And even when all the leaves are off my trees in the wintertime, they still don't put out that much light as far as illuminating the area. And yeah, I don't know if we need to switch to the the style of lights at Baltimore City or, you know, other, you know, high use areas do that, you know, literally just light up the entire area because the the streetlights that the city has, a little road light stop just on the other side of Creamery. Yeah, nobody ever thought about that one or redid the sidewalk. And right now, I don't think anybody wants to spend the money to dig a sidewalk up.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Thanks. Okay, we now turn to public comment from Laura Maring by Zoom. Ms. Maring, uh, same item. If you just please introduce yourself and provide your street address and then you will have uh the clock for your comment.
Can you hear me?
Yes, uh, our volume is low.
Okay, um, my name is Laura Maring. I own five zero two East Main Street, which is Ripley's Creamery. I just wanted to ask about, uh, we're talking about the town and making things look great. I'm I I wanted to discuss the, I wanted to discuss the property across the street from us with the abandoned house and the lot um over there.
Yes, ma'am.
So I'm just trying to understand a little bit more about that property. Um, and what is what? And if anything, if there is the town that can do um about having that building demolished. Uh, we have a lot of customers that make a lot of comments about that building. And we are um standing to invest about a quarter of a million dollars into renovating that building. So that's my question. Where are we um with that building? Uh, I know that there was a property cleanup that needed to happen. What can we do to have that building demolished is my question.
Okay, well, I'll turn that over to staff. Staff, I'm assuming it's a privately owned building and not owned by the town, first of all?
That's correct.
Okay.
And I can I can take over that. So, uh, the code, chapter eighteen, eight point sixteen hazardous and dangerous buildings. You know, what we can do if the board wishes and the mayor wishes is at some point, we can deem the building a hazardous and dangerous building. Just from firsthand knowledge, I know that the the basement is full of water. So I don't know if that causes mold issues and other issues. My concern personally is just like what happened to Chief Laird from Fairfield and from Frederick County is, you know, firefighter walks in the door and it's going to fall right through the door or through the floor because of the mold and water and and problems. So I've received complaints, not only from the Creamery, however, also neighbor, neighboring neighboring properties. You know, there's weeds there all the time. There's pests there all the time. There's just, it's a major issue for the town.
Have we been in touch with the property owner?
It's, yeah, it's held in estate, the estate of Mr. Hobbs. It's his daughter.
And any response related to the safety issues or the conditioner status?
No response. We've called multiple times. We sent letters. We've done everything we can possibly do. This would be the next step.
There's, there's a lot of things to take into consideration with that property.
Well, that's the other piece.
So um, it would need to be probably an agenda item for the board to discuss. We have sent her official letter, certified letter. She's aware of our concerns. She doesn't really share her her plans for the the house. So I'm not sure we know what direction she's headed in. But if that's something that the board would wish to hear, we can certainly make it a future agenda item. But that's the process. It has to be deemed by you guys first before anything can begin to move forward.
Okay, so let me put that in front of the board for the sort of a straw item.
Is it is it us or is it the mayor? What what does the town ordinance say? Doesn't say the mayor can.
It says both, actually, the mayor and Board of Commissioners. So if the board and the mayor would decide to put this as an agenda item, what staff would do then would reach out to the local fire company, the Department of Health and anyone else that we deems appropriate to um come up with reports. Because obviously, we aren't safety experts. So uh, this particular area, so.
For sure, Tom. Mr. Davis, does that answer your question?
Well, yeah, and I think we better move on it quicker than the the quickest way possible. Because number one, the basement full of water is a concern. Kids get in there, go through there. We could have kids drowned in there and we don't even know it, number one. Number two, the fire department's not going to go in. So thank God, you know, we're because we're just not going to, which is also a problem. Because if there is somebody in there, you know, so I I think we got to move quick.
Okay. Sure, Tom. Mr. Mayor, yes, sir. Thank you.
I I had spoke to staff earlier on this and and uh, my recommendation is we proceed with whatever the gauntlet is to get the skin down.
Okay.
And take it appropriately. Thank you.
So, Mr. Ritz, did you have a comment? Do you want to add something?
No, I I support what we're.
Okay, so we're going. Straw pole, then therefore i- is it safe to assume that we have unanimity to ask staff to move forward on this issue?
Yeah.
As an agenda item for a near future meeting? Like, for example, is this something, realistically speaking, that we could get an update on in um November?
I I think so. I will reach out to the fire chief and also the Department of Health and see how fast we can turn around and report.
Okay, so would it be fair to say we can get an update in November and potentially an action item of sorts for December? Is that unrealistic?
I think not. I think that's. He's, he thinks he could have an action item ready in November.
Okay, that's excellent.
At the very least, we'll put it on the agenda item for November. And if we don't have it ready as an action item, we can at least provide an update, then definitely have an action item in December.
Terrific. Okay.
Yes.
Excellent. Okay, um, Ms. Maring, does that help um present a clearer process on our part?
Yes, absolutely. Thank you very much.
Sure, thank you for uh for coming in, so to speak, through Zoom.
And just one more thing, Mr. President, just for clarification. If um, once the boards, if the board would send a letter to, it comes from the board and the mayor, the letter. She has fourteen days to basically request a public hearing. And then um, if the board determines that the issue still warrant remediation and if she refuses or whoever refuses, then the town has the authority to do the work itself and then lean the property just for clarification purposes.
Okay, so in order to issue that letter, do you need action from the board at this time?
No.
Or do you need to get direction from us to draft the letter and then we sign it individually?
Right, let let's get our attorney to review the letter before we drive, before we bring it to you and then get our our reports to say we have some legal backing.
Okay, so once we have assumingly clearance from the attorney, then do we hear back from you in the uh in the November meeting or do we hear it in the interim between the meeting?
No, it'll all be done at the November meeting.
Very good.
Right, right.
Okay.
There needs to be an official vote, an agenda items, the public's aware that is an agenda item. And you can vote on it and then we can proceed from there.
Thank you. Okay, so board, any questions related to this? No, okay, all right. So at this time, we therefore close public comments. We now move forward to our administrative business. Who? Mr. Mayor, is this you?
Thank you. If if I may, just add to my comments, I I found this. The October is uh celebrate dental hygiene month with the Seton Center at uh Paul Dental Program. And uh, kudos to them, what they've done with that over the years. And again, this, that's this month. Legit, our our attorney, not our attorney, our insurance broker is celebrating their thirty fourth year as a member of a local government insurance trust. And and they're, um, they they now serve us for liability, excess liability and property coverage. One one last thing in August of twenty 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 two, a baseball trip for twelve to fifteen participants will go to Cooper Cooperstown from Thurmond and Emmitsburg. And uh, Commissioner Davis probably only knows this, Keith Myers is the manager of the Potter Pirates and they're looking for money to help them out to do that. It'd be a sensational thing and the, they have provided names of youths who will be playing in that. So we're there. If if I may, I I'd like to read a proclamation. Again, as I mentioned, Becky Wilson retired and we read this proclamation there, but we told her it would be signed at tonight's meeting. Here we go. Proclamation Arbor Day, Saturday, October second, two thousand and twenty one. Whereas in eighteen seventy two, Jay Sterling Moore proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for planting of trees. And whereas the holiday called Arbor Day was the first observed with the planting of more than one million trees in Nebraska. Whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world. Whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind, water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate temperatures, clean the air, produce life giving oxygen, provide habitat for wildlife. And whereas trees are a renewable resource, give giving us paper. And whereas trees are a renewable resource, give, uh, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for fires. And countless other wood products. Whereas the trees in our city and increased property values enhance the economic vitality of business areas. And beautify our community. And whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renew. Now therefore be it proclaimed that by the mayor and council of the town of Emmitsburg, Maryland. Do hereby proclaim October second, two thousand twenty-one, it is Arbor Day in the town of Emmitsburg. And we proclaim all the citizens and organizations to support the efforts to protect our trees and woodlands by planting trees to gladden the heart. To promote the wellbeing of this and future generations adopted this the fourth day of October. Thank you, sir.
Great, thank you, sir. Okay, moving forward, now turn to.
Well, approve that.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, yes, forgive me. All in favor of accepting the proclamation as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anybody against?
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero? Okay.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Moving forward, uh, return to our consent agenda. Mr. Mayor, we turn to you.
Page eighteen.
Uh, eighteen of thirty-eight.
Um, and you know, for number six, it's Pastor John Greenstone. Can you turn your mic on also, please? Turn your mic on, please.
Oh, yeah. There we go. There we go. Thank you. Uh, we have a stormwater utility stakeholder advisory committee we're forming. And again, this is to, I'll just look at the, what, what we can do to offset expenses that the uh, we have to. I could, could incur and do occur uh, with regard to um, taking care of our impervious surfaces we've accrued over. Oh, two hundred and thirty years. And um, again, this has to do with the Chesapeake Bay. And, and all, uh, it's just a, what do we do? Where are we gonna have charges for businesses and? And, and also our, our institutions that do not pay taxes and our residents, it, it's just, is there something like that we may have to do? And uh, we, uh, I, I invited two, two members of the commission to, to serve on this. And then we went out to the community and tried to hit different people, big businesses, institutions and up. And also the county and, and the school board. Uh, Frank Davis will be a representative. Mr. Burns, Commissioner, uh, also Steve Trout of Jubilee and the Business Representative. Chetel Patel Duncan owner uh, will be there. George Brenton uh, is the largest parcel uh, nonprofit representing the daughters of charity. And uh, we have a, we're still looking for somebody from the church. We, we thought we had somebody.
I think it's Pastor John Greenstone.
Oh, he did?
Yes, sir.
Is that what you told me?
He's from the Council of Churches.
Council of Churches. All right, thank you. And Shannon Moore, Frederick County, she's the Director of Sustainability. Com- uh, Department for the, the county. Travis Tracy, Frederick County Public Schools, Mark Long, who's the Chairman of our, our President of our uh, Planning Commission Board. And Rachel Estes, who's a resident here. And uh, that, if, if you would, I, I'd like to have your approval.
Very good. Okay, so as this is a consent agenda item, uh, I look for a motion to accept this.
I make permission to accept this stormwater utility stakeholders of the Committee as presented.
Thank you, sir. Is there a second for the motion? Also. Thank you, sir. Um, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anybody against? Please say nay.
I voted aye.
Okay, nobody abstains? Very good. All, uh, the motion carries five to zero with all commissioners present. Thank you. We now turn to the treasurer's report. Commissioner Burns.
Goodness, the treasurer's report for the town of Emmitsburg, uh, the cash activity as of September twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-one. We had a cash balance on September first of seven million, five hundred and twenty-eight thousand, one hundred and forty. We had deposits in the amount of two hundred and eleven thousand, six hundred and thirty-one and withdrawals in the amount of two hundred and twenty-two thousand, six hundred and nine, which left us with an operating balance forward. Of seven million, five hundred and seventeen thousand, one hundred and sixty-two. The top ten check amounts are listed below. And just to follow up for Commissioner Ritz earlier. We're averaging for the payment to Mount St. Mary's, for that amount of water, it's just over a thousand dollars. So it's not in the grand scheme of things.
Very good. Thank you, sir. Okay, we now turn to the planning commission report.
I did have one question on that.
I'm sorry, yes, sir.
It did not. Solar. It was the two, um, the two checks the playground specialist. I'm just trying to jog my memory, the two, the swings. Was that an upgrade or was that due to vandalism?
That was an upgrade in Memorial Park. Uh, if you recall, we removed the swings and the rock climbing wall where the new ADA playground is.
Yes.
And they were reinstalled over in Memorial Park and then we upgraded uh, the existing swings at the other playground.
Good. I remember we had some vandalism problems. I couldn't.
Yes.
Trying to make sure that. Okay, thank you.
I, I want to say how, how nice they turned out being relocated over there. They were widely used this weekend.
Good.
It was full and the kids loved it.
Good. They did really good work with it. They made it look really nice.
Pretty lucky to have playground specialists in our community, for sure.
I just have one quick question.
Yes, sir.
For, for two years, we were hanging about five million and now all of a sudden we're up to seven million, which is a good thing. It's better than being at three. Is that?
The American Rescue Plan monies.
Ah, damn, I thought we were getting rich. Okay, all right.
Wealth is here, Mr. Davis. All right, here we go. We turn now to planning commission report.
Yes, Mr. President, planning commission met on September twenty-seventh. We conditionally approved the site plan and the improvement plan for Village Liquors and Plaza Inn. For those that are wondering or maybe concerned, that those conditions were minimal cleanup items. Um, there were no. For example, promises to incorporate any structures such as outdoor dining or anything of like that. So um, basically clean up on their plants and just to meet some things pertaining to town um, code. The Creamery Road Pump Station Improvement Plan that originally was scheduled for review that night has been postponed to the October twenty-fifth meeting. Didn't have everything ready for that. But we should be good to go in October. Any other questions regarding the report?
No, sir, not at this time. Anybody else? Mr. Sweeney, yes.
The, the plaza that's being built, is that the Village Liquors, is that? I don't know if everybody else got a letter, but I got.
Where people are.
For the Village Liquors. And they're having problems with sign and stuff. And, and it's not a very nice letter.
Do you want to address this?
For something else.
Letter we received from the, I guess it's the Village Liquors, is that for the plaza and stuff or?
For regarding the signs?
Yes.
That was for his existing location. And I sent an email kind of saying that we were going to just uh, cease any enforcement of his signs at this time. And then once he moves into his new building, um, hopefully everything will come into play. He'll have. Much more window space and allowable areas. And I think Commissioner, uh, excuse me, Davis has talked about maybe he's forming a committee to look at the sign ordinance. But for now, um, he is good on his signs and, and we'll see what he brings forth of his new building.
The, the way the letter stated, he wasn't happy. He's gonna take his business elsewhere if we didn't.
I think he's happy now, right?
Commissioner Sweeney, the letter, are you talking about the letter you received on your desk in the back? Because we had a copy sent to us too, and I, I was confused when I first got it. I thought it was something new and then realized, wait a minute, this was already, um, this was already addressed.
All right.
Terrific. Okay, so. Uh, we now turn to agenda item number one from the main agenda. Ms. Willetts, do I need to hand this over to the treasurer as Mr. Sweeney and I are the, the? Oh, very good. All right. So, Mr. Sweeney, I give you the keys.
Item number one, uh, swearing in of the elected officials. Commissioner O'Donnell.
Thank you, sir.
All right, uh, Chris, Chris, Timothy J. O'Donnell, congratulations. I, I, Timothy J. O'Donnell, do affirm that I support, do affirm that I support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And I will be faithful, and I will be faithful, and bear true allegiance and bear true allegiance to the state of Maryland.
To the state of Maryland.
Support the Constitution and laws.
And support the Constitution and laws.
Thereof.
Thereof.
And I will do my best, I, I will do the best of my skill and judgment.
And I will do the best of my skill and judgment.
Diligently and faithfully.
Diligently and faithfully.
Without partiality or prejudice.
Without partiality or prejudice.
Execute the office of Commissioner.
Execute the office of Commissioner.
The town of Emmitsburg, Maryland.
Of the town of Emmitsburg, Maryland.
According to the Constitution and laws of the state.
According to the Constitution of the laws and state.
And the Charter and Code of the Town of Emmitsburg.
And the Charter and Code of the Town of Emmitsburg, Maryland.
Congratulations.
Thank you, sir. Really appreciate it.
Very good. Congratulations.
Be careful you stand up.
Sweeney, congratulations on winning your election. Look forward to working the other three years. I'm gonna, I should raise your right hand and repeat that for me. Aye.
Aye. Cliff Sweeney.
J. L. L. Sweeney. That's you. Okay. Uh, do affirm that I will support.
Do affirm that I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And I will be faithful.
I will be faithful.
And bear true allegiance.
And bear true allegiance.
To the state of Maryland.
To the state of Maryland.
Support the Constitution laws.
Support the Constitution and laws.
Thereof.
Thereof.
And that I will do the best of my skill.
And that I will do the best of my skill.
And judgment.
And judgment.
Diligently and faithfully.
Diligently and faithfully.
Without partiality or prejudice.
Without partiality or prejudice.
Execute the office of Commissioner.
Execute the office of Commissioner.
For the town of Emmitsburg, Maryland.
For the town of Emmitsburg, Maryland.
According to the Constitution laws of the state.
According to the Constitution and laws of the state.
And the Charter and Code.
And the Charter of Code.
With the town of Emmitsburg, Maryland.
For the town of Emmitsburg, Maryland.
Congratulations, sir. What's up? What, what do you want in the background? The seal, Thuriel. Sort of shake hands and that.
Okay, at this time, we turn to agenda item number two, the mayor's recommendations for a reorganization of the Board of Commissioners for consideration.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Uh, these are my recommendations for the, the next year. For reorganization of the board. We're really working hard. I think all the questions have been answered up here about what we're trying to, Commissioner Burns, about. Our responsibility to get out there and do things. And we are making the improvements and uh, sometimes it's just the market that tells the business to come here. It, like Denny's, do you, can I get the sales here? But, and also do we have the availability of uh, uh, commercial sites to attract more? And, and we're really a little thin on that and uh, we need to work on that. I, I recommend for President of the Board, Timothy O'Donnell. Vice President, Cliff Sweeney, Clifford Sweeney, Treasurer, T.J. Burns. Planning Commission Liaison, Joseph Ritz the third. Park Committee Liaison, Frank Davis. Citizens Advisory Commission Liaison, Clifford Sweeney. As my recommendation.
Okay. Any discussion from the board? Okay, is there a motion to accept the recommendation, the mayor's recommendations for board reorganization as presented? Okay, is there a second for Mr. Sweeney's motion?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Motion's been made by Commissioner Sweeney, seconded by Commissioner Burns. Any further comment or discussion?
Just, just a question, just make sure we're all on board here for the board, everyone. I'm assuming everybody's happy with this, um. Recommendation. I haven't heard any, just making sure. Okay. All right, then I am too.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Ritz.
I contacted everybody before. Thank you.
Okay, therefore, um, we'll call the vote. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody against? The motion carries five to zero. Yes, sir. Okay. So, um, we turn now to agenda item number three. Community Development Block Grant Public Hearing to provide information on the progress of the townwide ADA sidewalk curb ramp project presentation by staff. Okay, so do we need to move to close the meeting briefly and then open the hearing? Okay, very good. So therefore. All right. Uh, I will need a motion to end our regular meeting and start a public hearing.
I move to close the little town meeting.
Okay, and is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. So the motion's been made by Commissioner Sweeney, seconded by Commissioner Ritz. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Thank you. Okay, um. At this time, I call a hearing and the meeting to discuss the town of Emmitsburg State Fiscal Year twenty twenty-one Community Development Block Grant Project has now started. We turn now to staff for presentation.
Okay, thank you, Mr. President. The, this public hearing was advertised in English and in Spanish as required by our grant. In the Frederick News Post on September twentieth, two thousand twenty-one. Community Development Block Grant recipients are required to conduct two public hearings, one before the application is submitted, which we held on December eighth, two thousand twenty. And also one during the implementation of the grant, which we are holding tonight. We are required to provide the public information on the progress of the grant-funded project and also give the public the opportunity to provide comments on the project or anything else they wish to comment on. The town was awarded a six hundred eighty-five thousand, eight hundred ninety-three dollar grant. In order to renovate a hundred thirty sidewalk curb ramps throughout the town in order to become compliant with the Americans with Disabilities Act. The town is contributing uh, ten thousand in kind and has received eighteen hundred dollars in donations from numerous HOAs throughout the town. The town awarded the construction contract. The town awarded the construction contract to MEM Construction, Inc., on July 12th, 2021. All property owners adjacent to a ramp that is to be reconstructed were notified by mail by the mayor on July 13th, 2021. All HOAs have also been notified. To date, the contractor has completed 35 out of 130 ramps. $162,107.88 has been paid to the contractor. No issues have occurred. No complaints have been received. The budget, or excuse me, the project is within budget and the project is ahead of schedule. The contractor has until April 17th, 2022 to finish the project. However, they are expecting to finish in November 2021. Any complaints and grievances related to this project may be submitted at any time to myself. I can be contacted by phone at 301-663-09. By email at zgolden, G U L D E N, at emmitsburgmd.gov. Or in person at the town office located at 300A South Seaton Avenue, Emmitsburg, Maryland, 21727. And that is my presentation, Mr. President.
Thank you, sir. Are there any questions for staff from the board related to this item? Hearing none. I turn now for public comment. Are there any public comments on this matter related to the ADA compliance? Hearing none. I then now ask for a motion to close, sorry, pardon me. At this time, we now close public comment. Okay, if no one has anything more to present. The public comment period is now closed. Okay, so. We turn to our board for deliberation related to this. Is there any discussion among the board, any comments related to the sidewalk process? No comments. Therefore, Mr. Golden, we turn to you for a moment. Okay, staff, anything else final to add?
That's everything. Thank you.
Okay, all right, so we conclude our deliberation. Is there a motion to conclude the public hearing?
I assume.
Is there a second for Mr. Sweeney's motion? Thank you. Motion's been made by Commissioner Sweeney, seconded by Commissioner Burns. No further discussion, any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
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 The motion carries five to zero with all commissioners present. Okay, is there a motion to reopen the town meeting?
I'll make a motion to reopen the town meeting.
Thank you, sir. Is there a second for the motion?
Second.
The motion's been made by Commissioner Burns, seconded by Commissioner Davis. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of restarting the meeting, please say aye.
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 Anybody against? Motion carries five to zero. We can now resume our town meeting and turn to agenda item number four. Related to the designation of American Rescue Plan Funds for consideration, and we now turn to staff.
Thank you. As everybody's aware, the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021 Coronavirus Local Fiscal Recovery Funds Disbursement. Gave monies to local cities, towns, counties. In an effort to combat the hardship of coronavirus. They took into consideration the town of Emmitsburg's budget. Pre-COVID. As of, I believe it was January 2020. And based off our budget, the town of Emmitsburg was awarded a total of $3,150,859.86 through the American Rescue Plan Act. On July 26th of 2021, the town received the first tranche in the amount of $1,575,429.93. The town will receive the second tranche, $1,575,429.93, in no less than 12 months. They say it's approximately one year to the date of when you received your first installment. Just a quick reminder of what the allowable usages for this money is. Is to support public health expenditures and address negative economic impacts. Replace lost public sector revenue. Provide premium pay for essential workers and invest in water, sewer, and broadband infrastructure. Our first report's due to the state of Maryland on October 31st. We have one report due every year, no later than October 31st. We have till 2024 to designate the monies and you have until 2026 to, no, my dates are wrong. You have till 2026 to designate your money. The mayor and staff recommend the first installment, the $1,575,000, be used for the completion of the water clarifier and the new pump station. The monies will be used to cover shortfalls in both projects. The estimated cost of the pump station is $3,657,000. We received funding from USDA and a loan, the loan for $1,987,000. We received a grant for $833,000. We received another grant for $30,000, making the town's responsibility $807,000 for the completion of the pump station. The water clarifier estimated cost is $2,360,000. That is increased from the original estimate of 1.5 million due to the findings during the preliminary engineering and environmental report. That's the purpose of those reports, to see what we're up against. We did receive, we received notification from the state of Maryland Public Works that we did receive the funding and the amount of a million dollars from the state. Making our shortfall $1,360,000 for the water clarifier. So we would like to use the majority of the money for the water clarifier due to the state of the water budget. And the remaining monies will be used for the pump station. And I'm seeking, the mayor and I are seeking board approval. To utilize the monies for these two infrastructure projects that are desperately needed.
How were we going to fund this before?
Well, the pump.
If we wouldn't have got the 3 million.
Right, so the pump station, the $807,000 out of the sewer budget was doable for the town. We were fortunate enough to get a loan and get. Funding from USDA. The water clarifier. You're saying after the million dollars from USDA? So there was two options. The $500,000 could be, could be supported through the water budget over the course of a year or so, or two years for the way the project's going. The other option was I'd already reached out to the Department of Community Housing and Development. And they offer municipalities very low interest loans for these type of projects. That can be spread out, payments can be spread out up to 40 years.
Okay, will this help us get to the replacement of water lines any quicker? With this, since we can, we're using this money for other projects, yeah, so we'll.
So my hope is for the next, the next go around, the next installment. With the mayor's support, I'd like to bring that back for the funding of the DePaul Street and North Seaton Water Lines that are now currently. We're currently in the process of doing the preliminary engineering report and if needed, an environmental report.
Okay, I think the community's been very patient with us, but it's time to start to move. That's great.
Well, it's unfortunate that the state, the state denied us funding for the pump station, which set us back over a year, year and a half. They actually even denied us funding for the DePaul Street and the North Seaton Avenue water lines because we applied for all three projects at the same time, correct, Matty? And they denied us funding for all of them. So unfortunately, that has set us back well over a year. So we're working on it. That was, infrastructure's been my main goal since. I was appointed as town manager and I really appreciate the board's support in moving forward with it because it's much needed.
Okay, thanks.
Mr. Sweeney, you had a question?
No.
No, Mr. Ritz.
I did have one, but it was answered.
Okay, I do.
Mr. Ritz, yes, sir.
Okay, so tonight, if we, if we approve this, then our proposal goes for someone to review, correct? No?
No, so. It's just, you need designation from the board of what, what we're going to use this monies for.
Okay.
These are two allowable projects or expenses that are allowed under this American Rescue Plan Act.
Yes.
They have not come out with the guidelines for reporting yet. My understanding, I would imagine, is going to be similar to some of the other agencies where we submit, we'll submit our invoices, our canceled checks and outline of what the projects are. And then they'll just review that, but no, they do not have to review these until we report it. I know other municipalities are already spending the money.
Okay, I'm, what I'm just, what I'm ultimately getting at here is obviously, yes, we are meeting one of the allowable usages. It's the last, you know, investing in new water infrastructure. What I'm hoping, that there's no fine print somewhere, that somewhere in government above us will say, hey, you know, you're, you're doing this for your water infrastructure. Hey, let's look at your town rates.
No, this, this will not, this will have no effect on that at all. Now, I've been very upfront, to get any USDA funding, we do need to investigate our water rates and our sewer rates.
I remember.
And that's an absolute, but as far as this project's concerned, or this money's concerned, they've already given us the money. We just have to show what we're using it for. They're not going to look at our rates. And I've been on four webinars to make sure that these projects are allowable expenses.
And I was just using the rates as an example.
Right.
What I'm, what I just want to make absolutely 100% sure that there's no, you know, fine print somewhere, like a catch to any of this.
I haven't seen one so far, but like I said, they haven't come out with their guidelines for reporting for municipalities that. We're considered a non-entitlement unit because of our population, which means the money was funneled through the state to us. So they have not come out with their reporting guidelines as of yet. I was kind of waiting on that before I, I spent any of the money to make sure that we dot our i's and cross our t's. And I would imagine since the first report's due October 31st, they should be coming out with their guidelines soon.
Okay. I just.
And also, we'll have our attorney look over any document before we sign them. They're correct. Right?
Yeah.
That's just.
I've already had, I've had discussions with our auditors as well. I just want to make sure we do it all right.
Yeah, no, and I, I agree. I totally support and we definitely need these infrastructure. Improvements, just. You always get that feeling, you know, there's something there. So just, just wanted to get that out in the open, you know?
It feels too simple.
Yes.
Sure.
It's not.
It's, it sounds like it's been very.
Well, I mean, it's not, I'm not saying it's simple, because I know you did all your homework, so I'm not spreading that, but.
It's one of those things that this is, thank you so much for this money, but it's a lot to make sure we follow everything.
It's transparent red tape.
Correct.
Yes. All right, I'm finished. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ritz. Mr. Burns, Commissioner Burns.
I think two years ago, Commissioner Davis and I both got elected into office. We talked about infrastructure and then about a month and a half later.
Round water.
Yeah, we had an unfortunate incident with the infrastructure and I think we've talked about it. At length in every meeting. Since that day, it's been brought up, DePaul Street, North Seaton, Waynesboro Pike. I don't think there's a time we haven't discussed it and I think this is exactly the infrastructure we've been talking about this entire time and the fact that we're finally able to have the money. With some red tape, unfortunately, to finally start addressing these issues and then when the rest of the money comes in. I think that's the infrastructure that we've been talking about for so long and it's finally being addressed that hopefully. Things that have been kicked down to the curb for the last 30-plus years, we might finally be able to finalize and. Which would then allow us to open up a lot more opportunities for the town.
Great, thank you, sir. Okay, so, as well, it's just for clarification, when I am, so we have this in place, the vote goes forward, assumingly the vote will go positively in a hypothetical. The money gets spent, the next funding would come in one year. So we would be looking at 2023 for, potentially looking at 2023 for the replacement of pipes in our most critical areas. Is that an accurate timeline, just hypothetically?
Probably, so once this preliminary engineering report and if needed, environmental report are done. On the water lines for North Seaton and DePaul Street, we'll, we are still going to go ahead and submit probably again to MDE and we'll definitely submit to USDA for funding. And whatever we don't get, we can utilize the second round to supplement it. Or if it covers it all, then we, we definitely, we have a long list of infrastructure projects.
Correct.
So we will find another project that it's needed for.
Right, so we have a list of critical needs and we're knocking them through in a punch.
Right.
Terrific, okay. I just think sometimes there's the question in the community of, do we have a system? Do we have a process in place? We do.
We do.
I don't know if it's visible on the website, but if it's not, I don't know that I've seen it, but if we could put it out there, our critical hit list, so to speak, our punch list, that might be a useful thing. So folks can see that we do have a process and intent to get this done. Very good. Okay, so with that in mind, is there a motion from the board to accept these two applications for this infrastructure funding? Make the motion. Thank you, sir. Is there a second for Mr. Davis's motion?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Motion's been made by Commissioner Davis, seconded by Commissioner Burns. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Anybody against? Motion carries five to zero. All commissioners present. Perfect.
Thank you.
That's good stuff. All right, we turn now to agenda item number five. Consideration of approval of public works equipment purchase for the USDA facility disaster grant for consideration.
Thank you. So at the last meeting, we brought two of the items that were going to be funded through the USDA grant. The SCADA system and computers for the wastewater treatment plant and the Baco loader. Were both approved by the board at the last meeting. The multi-user tractor was also approved at the, or that was approved by management because it was under the threshold. But we did put that out to bid, as I mentioned. The final item as part of the USDA grant was the work truck for our public works department. It was put out to bid on September 13th of 2021. Outline there is the grant funding that we received for the four-by-four work truck with eight-foot utility bed. We published the RFP on Monday, September 13th. The bids were due Friday at noon. We advertised the website, MML Classifieds, the eMaryland Marketplace, and we sent. RFPs to potential contractors. After review of the bids, myself and staff, we only received two bids. The first bid, they withdrew their bid. It was missing a main component in the scope that we were looking for. When we requested additional information, they just asked to withdraw their bid, leaving us with one bid. From MJR Equipment in Hagerstown, or in Harrisburg, excuse me. The amount of $63,004.79. Obviously, we recommend approving that bid for the four-by-four work truck with an eight-foot utility bed. This is a company that we do deal with, we've done business with. The public work staff, they have, work with them, not daily, but quite a bit. They've got a great customer service. They've got a good maintenance plan. They actually bring their maintenance truck to our shop and will work on our equipment if needed. They will come and pick it up for us. It's outstanding customer service. We actually, the board approved purchase of the 2019 mini dump and the 2020 dump truck from MJR Equipment. MJR Equipment and just sign it, Frederick County purchases all theirs from them as well. So staff would recommend proceeding with this one bid of MJR Equipment for $63,004.79.
Terrific. Any questions from staff?
Did they give you a timeline for delivery?
Sorry, I misspoke.
I'm sorry.
Any questions from the board for staff?
Okay, sorry. Will they give you a timeline for delivery?
I don't recall off the top of my head if they mentioned it. Our public works director felt fairly confident we'd get it within the next four to six weeks.
God, I hope so. And the only reason I bring that up, we ordered our, our new ambulance in June and we just got notified we won't have a chassis until next June. So.
Right.
Yeah, they, yeah, I hope not. I'll follow up tomorrow to see what the exact the timeline is.
Well, it's, I mean, it's not like we don't have a dump truck, but.
But still.
Was that the same company?
No, but it's, you know, the manufacturer for the, for the chassis just don't have.
Oh, okay.
It just reflects the market right now.
I see what you're saying.
And for clarification, this is a new vehicle, is that correct?
Correct, it's a new vehicle with the utility bed. It also will have the plow package. And the necessary lights for our vehicles for emergency or for safety purposes.
Terrific, okay. Any other questions from the board?
Just one.
Yes, sir.
My math's off tonight, so when it's all said and done, we. We're still within our threshold for that grant, right?
So we had, we had to ask for additional monies. We originally estimated the vehicle to be about $80,000. So Ms. Shaw reached out to you. So Michelle reached out to USDA and they said they still had money available. We just have to submit for the additional amount because I think originally we submitted for 45,000, I believe. Yeah, for 45,000. So the additional 18,000, we just have to submit for the additional monies, but they do have it available.
And do we have to have that in hand then before we receive the truck?
No, we'll go ahead and place the order for it and, and Matty will submit the paperwork to USDA tomorrow. We were just waiting for board approval.
Okay.
And once they give us board approval, then we can move for, or USDA gives us approval, we can move forward.
All right.
Any more questions?
Thank you.
Okay, therefore, is there a motion to accept the four by four work truck with eight foot utility bed as described?
Let me make the motion.
Thank you. Is there a second for Commissioner Davis's motion?
Second.
Thank you. Motion made by Commissioner Davis, seconded by Commissioner Ritz. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. Anybody against? Motion carries five to zero with all commissioners present. We now turn to agenda item number six. Rutter's Forest Conservation deed of easement and authorized mayor to sign on behalf of the town for consideration.
All right. Thank you, Mr. President. This is our last deed of easement between the town and Rutter's, better known, or MNG Realty, better known as Rutter's. This is the Aforestation and Forest Conservation deed of easement. If I can direct you to page 34 and also page 35 of your agenda packet. Page 34 shows the forest, Aforestation easement. This means these are existing areas of forest on the property which need to be saved. And also on page 35 is the Forest Conservation easement. These are areas where they are actually going to be planting some new trees as required per code, state code and town code. Basically, in a nutshell, this is between the town and the Rutter's, gives the authority for the town and the state to enter the property to do inspections. And basically states that the, that Rutter's is responsible for maintenance and replacing trees if they die, et cetera. So that is my presentation. Your.
Mr. Golden, will we see plows moving upon approval of this? Is this the last piece or is there anything else we anticipate to delay construction?
So, you know, the, the ground was broken. They're ready to rock and roll very soon. They're waiting on a word from their contractor.
Okay.
Whenever the contractor is ready to go, they're ready to start digging.
That's great.
According to the, when we did the groundbreaking, they were waiting on the grading permit from Frederick County.
And that's been approved.
That's what they were waiting.
Everything's approved now.
Contractors finishing up one down on Monocacy.
Yeah, I was wondering if that was going to affect us. Okay, thank you. That's good to know. All right. So with that in mind, is there a motion from the board to accept the Rutter's Forest Conservation deed of easement and authorize Mayor Briggs to sign on behalf of the town?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second for Mr. Ritz's motion?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Motion's been made by Commissioner Ritz, seconded by Commissioner Burns. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Anybody against? The motion carries five to zero with all commissioners present. Forward. Yes. Setting the agenda for our next town meeting, November 1st, 2021 at 7:30 PM.
I have a long list, just heads up. Administrative item, it will be proclamation for municipal governments works month, November 2021 for consideration. Consent agenda, reappointment of Bernard Franklin to the Citizens Advisory Committee. That's a consent. Number one will be the approval of an order declaring 507 East Main Street as a hazardous and dangerous building for consideration. Number two, approval of new employee hire for the position of the water sewer operator, trainee for consideration. Approval of sewer connection agreement with 500 East Main Street and authorized to sign on behalf of the town for consideration. Is that one, two, three? Next will be the approval of the sewer connection agreement with 502 East Main Street and authorized mayor to sign on behalf of the town for consideration. The next one, approval of a temporary construction deed of easement with Emmitsburg East Industrial Park LLC and authorized mayor to sign on behalf of the town for consideration. Next, approval of a 25-year revertible forest conservation deed of easement with the Daughters of Charity and author mayor to sign on behalf of the town for consideration. Find that 303 West Lincoln Avenue is no longer needed for a public purpose and set the sale price for consideration. Finally, find that three acres at 16715 Creamery Road wastewater treatment plant property is no longer needed for a public purpose and set the sale price for consideration. That's all I have.
Any questions for the town manager related to the proposed agenda items?
No, but I have a request. I know it's a full plate.
Yes, Mr. Ritz.
I would like to add an administrative business item.
Yes, sir.
I don't even know if this is something, let's talk about it right now. This ties into what I brought up earlier regarding agenda items. I would like to see a modification to the agenda schedule and presentation of agenda items for consideration.
What?
Meaning our agenda items are a little bit more straightforward for the public. And on our website, it specifically states what we're talking about. Like if it references something, then have a link to it or actual text. Because a lot of times, again, like, you know, our, our update to the animal awareness, it didn't really say much. You know, like, like even if it's a summary, hey, we're going to be talking about, you know, additions to the dogs, adding chickens, adding bees.
So.
I'm not sure that we, I mean, I think it's been duly noted by staff and I think we can do better. And I think, looking over what I just read, I think all of these are, are pretty self-explanatory. But I think we can, you know, I don't think we need an agenda item. I think we know that we may, maybe need to do a better job explaining it. And, you know, if we, we bring it to your attention and when I read the agenda item and if it needs more explanation, then we can amend it and make it so it's, it's more understandable.
That would be great. However, part of my, what I'm looking at too is when the agendas are prepared for our meetings, they come out the Thursday before the meeting. That's when the public sees them too. So we have four days. That's four days for everyone to do their due diligence and quickly read over that. I do it. I know other board members do it too. Is that really enough time for the board and the public? So I'd like to at least discuss that, maybe even consider it.
But yeah, I, I agree. And I, I think, Mr. Ritz, if I could coattail on what you're saying. From the public perspective, again, we can see, we saw tonight where there's a lack of clarity on something. Like it's not the intent of staff to cause confusion. We know that for.
I'm not saying that at all. No.
But, but the, the reality is that there's vernacular here that we're accustomed to because we were acclimated to it. But when we deal with general public, for example, number five, the way it stands in the proposed agenda, I'd like to know what construction, where there's an easement related to construction, when and where. I mean, that, that would be kind of a useful thing to add clarity to it. So.
Exactly.
An executive summary, a one or two sentence summary. So it's, you know, for, for lack of a better term, translated into English.
Now, one could argue too that, well, maybe no one's receiving questions, you know, no one's, well, no one's asked, you know, what it, what that is, but maybe.
Okay, so how would you like to title this, Mr. Ritz, for administrative business?
I'd like to talk about that agenda schedule too though. So I, I I said, right now, I just wrote down modification to town meeting agenda schedule and presentation of agenda items for consideration. But I'm willing to have that wordsmith in a more, here, here, I'm talking about an agenda item.
How about discussion of agenda presentation?
Is it?
I think what he's asking is he wants the agenda out earlier.
That's part of it.
Just.
I mean, yeah, that would be nice.
Well, I get most of my monthly reports like two days before the agenda goes out so it can capture all the information. So. And you think about today, today's what, October 4th? And the next meeting, I don't know what the date is in November. I mean, it's a, it's a quick turnaround with all the information we try to put in these. We move from all the agenda items that we did right now to the next set of agenda items and trying to turn them around in three weeks is, is very challenging as it is. Or sometimes it's four weeks, three weeks. And the, the workload on top of everything else besides putting out an agenda packet. It's, it's, it's difficult and, and that's why.
I can understand that.
Which the, you know, the bids didn't make it into the, into the packet. I mean, I have, I, I agree with you that we could do a better explanation on explaining some of these agenda items. But I mean, I'll be very forthcoming with it. It's going to be very difficult if you back that agenda schedule up.
Well, your, your.
workload is now.
Town manager reports, you said you, you, you get that, how, how soon before a meeting?
About two or three days for the month before.
But they're two months behind.
Right. You think about how busy, I get my public works one very quick, but Dan, his water and sewer report, all the numbers that go into what you see is like six or seven pages of data that we have to work through.
It used to be like hand recorded, right? Now, I thought it was all computerized.
Not all of it. A lot of it's coming along, but I'm, it's just. I would ask you to consider not backing that agenda schedule up, just for staff's sake, as busy as they are right now. And try to, try to put an agenda packet out in a quicker turnaround. I would foresee things being missed in from the packet that would just get presented at the meeting then. But I mean, I'd be more than happy to discuss it at a meeting, even set the agenda item.
Yeah, let's discuss it because I, I know we've had some items before in the past too, where it, it seems like, you know, things were put on the agenda and then they dropped only because we weren't ready for it. Or things might, things got through, seemed to be rushed almost because we needed to get something through, but really we should have waited.
And a lot of times we're waiting on, on documents from contractors or engineers or, or attorneys or auditors. And, you know, sometimes we're at their mercy.
I mean, I'll leave it to the rest of the board. If they think I'm crazy and it's a dumb idea, then so be it. But I, I just.
Oh, I'm not saying it's a dumb idea. I'm just saying I don't know that it's doable.
Well, they might not agree with me. So at least for a discussion item.
I'll ask you this then, what, I mean, so obviously at the end of each meeting, we're given what we're think we might talk about at the next meeting, correct? So we have, we have those seven, eight, nine, 12 tonight items. Would it help? I mean, obviously if they've already decided in advance that, hey, these are the items we want to talk about, they would have, for lack of a better term, Cliff Notes version of that, one to two sentences of, hey, this is what it's going to be about. Would that be helpful in the long run?
Yes, I think that's how it was done in the past. Commissioner Sweeney can, can attest to that. I know when there were two town meetings, goodness, probably 25 years ago, 20, 25 years ago, they, they, they actually discussed at a town meeting what, what would be on that agenda.
Right. But when we did it, we didn't have 12 items on, we only had like four.
Okay.
Three, and then they was able to get it.
Right. I mean, we're far busier than.
But there was an idea of at least what you'd be discussing though, clearly, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so just to round this out, so let's do this. We're having part of the discussion right now. Why don't we put that discussion in the administrative business?
Okay.
Is that reasonable to the board?
Yes.
I'm okay. Yeah, at least I'll jump in here and just say, even if it's a discussion item and then go from there.
Okay.
Okay.
That would be.
I, I can, I can compromise.
Yeah, I say loaded up. I won't be here next month. Loaded up. Dear. We'll find you, Mr. Davis.
Action items.
Oh, good.
So what, what, what is your agenda language? So we can write it down.
Discussion of agenda presentation format. Mr. Ritz, would that satisfy?
I think for me it does. Everyone else all right with that? Is that, is that too vague?
I think it covers our bases. Is that fair?
Yeah.
Okay, so why don't we go ahead with that? Is it staff? Is that okay by you?
Yes.
Okay.
They were, they were discussing. I wasn't sure.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
Any other items?
Discussion of agenda presentation format.
Yes, ma'am.
Under admin.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Just the one thing I'd like for you to consider with that next month, since I, I won't be here, is maybe some of our ordinance stuff could be presented one meeting and not voted on to the next. That way we have time to do some background things and it might've eliminated the B problem if we could have. Well, you had some time to do some background work on it.
Yeah, and you always have that option to table it till the next meeting. Some, some things are, are time sensitive, but then others such as that one was not. But there are some things that are time sensitive and that we try to get done, but.
Yeah. Okay. Yeah. Because one thing I like to see is considered too is maybe having, you know, one or two meetings a year to deal nothing but ordinance stuff. Especially like the second meeting of the month to do nothing but ordinance stuff. That way our regular business meeting is not drug out to, well, tonight is probably going to be 11 o'clock. So. That makes any sense. Then we can knock a whole bunch of ordinances out at one short shot and not hold these poor people up here forever. So.
Sorry, it took so long to get this point across.
That's what's necessary. Mr. Davis, I'll see to it that those get, that are included, that those are included in that discussion. And I'll follow up with you after this meeting. So I have a framework of what you're looking to have. Okay? Okay, so any other items, modifications, enhancements from the board related to the presented agenda, the proposed agenda, excuse me? No. All right. Therefore, is there a motion to accept the agenda as presented, including the meeting agenda, the administrative business agenda and the consent agenda items?
So moved.
Very good. Is there a second for Mr. Rich's motion? Okay, motions were made by Commissioner Ritz, seconded by Commissioner Sweeney. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye. Very good. Okay, so I need to make a closing statement before we close the meeting related to the closed session that will be forthcoming. So, Mr. Sweeney, I'm going to hand this to you, sir, because this relates to a motion.
Are you making a motion?
Yep. Okay. So. I make a motion to close the October 4th, 2021 town meeting at 10 PM for a closed executive session to consult with staff, consultants or other individuals about potential litigation relating to sanitary sewer overflows during rain events as permitted by the general provisions article, section 3 dash 305 subsection B subsection 8. The reason for a closed session discussion of this topic is that public discussion of the potential litigation would prejudice the town's ability to defend against and resolve the litigation. The Board of Commissioners will not be meeting in another open session after the closed session has ended.
Motion's been made by Commissioner Donald. Is there a second?
No, second.
This has been seconded by Commissioner Davis. Is there any discussion?
Yes, sir.
All favor, please say aye.
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 Any ayes?
Meeting ends at 10 PM.
Does anybody want to take a recess for a few minutes before we resume?